Does it say, is she gonna say her thing? Recording in progress.
Recording in progress.
There she is. Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Oregon City Enhancement Grant Program Committee, and today is Monday, October 20th, 2025, and I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for the roll call, please.
Here.
Denise McGriff.
Present.
Mike Mitchell.
Here.
Rocky Smith.
Here.
Scott Wilson.
Here.
Christine Lewis.
Present.
Marie Andrews. Eric Bruckbauer.
Here.
Judy Schaefer.
Thank you. Before we get started, I just wanted to thank everybody for taking the time to be here. This is something that we've been talking about for probably over a year that we wanted to try to have this particular meeting, and I just want to help set the tone because I think everybody knows why we're here. We're looking at a reboot, and I know over the past few years, several of us, maybe all of us, I don't want to speak for other people, have had a little bit of frustration with regard to the program, its purposes, and where we're going with it. And so some of you are not aware of the history from back when the program actually started, so I'm just going to tell you a little bit. So basically, when the city approved a conditional use permit for the Metro South Transfer Station back in the late 80s, this program was in sort of the brainstorming stage, and then a few years later, we entered into an agreement with the Metropolitan Service District to have this grant program to minimize the impacts of the Park Place that was, the Park Place Neighborhood was having. So that had to do with traffic and smells and what, I mean, there were all sorts of things in that, in that original document. And basically, the area of impact was the Park Place Neighborhood and the immediate area around the transfer station. And so most of the things that were done at that particular time involved physical improvements. There were ongoing neighborhood cleanups. They would bring in 40-yard dumpsters, and people would collect tires, and it was a real neighborhood effort with the park place neighborhood and the city staff working together. Some of you may have gone by the intersection of Redland Road and Holcomb Boulevard, and that area used to be a sloping hill that had a runoff, and now there's a stairway, there's access there, there's a neighborhood sign, there's plantings. It's an ODOT right of way, but they allowed the city and the neighborhood to allow for access because people were coming from Holcomb and then trying to run down that hill to get to the plaid pantry and the pizza place, and it was frankly, it was dangerous. So now there's access there. A sidewalk has been put in, and again, we did that with some Metro Enhancement Funds. The area subsequent to that was expanded to include more of the city and almost most of the city, and again, some of the projects that were done at that time were all basically physical improvements. So it's things that we've seen in the past of, you know, wetland restoration, tire collection, doing cleanups in creeks and getting tires and other things out of those areas. Those were things that we were funding. And so I think, you know, this current timeframe, we've got some information from staff about the program. We're going to review some of the program guidelines and go over all of that, but I just wanted to give you all just a little bit of background kind of from the perspective of where this came from and where it is today. And I think we have, I think all of you, I thank all of you again for, you know, your work that you've done in the past and looking at the applications, but again, I think we all agree that we need, we need to take another, we need to take a really hard look at this and look at what it is we really want the program to achieve. And I know in our past discussions, we've all kind of talked about generally that we want to be able to touch it, see it, that sort of thing. So that's just, I just wanted to give a little background and history. So the program's been in effect, and our grant, our agreements, are they, were they three years or were they five?
Five.
Five? Okay, that's what I was remembering too, is that they were five-year increments. And we're coming up on another, another round. So anyway, does anybody have any questions before we go on to, and you know, you know some of this as well because you were on the commission. I was on the other side of the counter, so. All right, so does anybody have any questions or concerns about the minutes from the August 27th meeting? If you've had any scrivener's errors, I'm assuming you got them to staff ahead of time, and they were able to make those? So is there a motion?
I move to approve the minutes from August 27th meeting.
Yeah, now, one set says the 26th, the other one says the 27th, so it's one of those two days. There's been moved in second that we approve the last meeting minute, so it looks like it says Tuesday, August 26th, so just one day off. So all those in favor just signify by saying aye.
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 I think we don't really need a roll call vote. Okay. Is there anybody online?
Nope, no one is online.
Okay, so let's, we will move past number three. So let's delve into the discussion item of the program review, and then we can talk about revision after we get the review. Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to also express the same sentiment that the mayor has about thanking you all to be here. I have been looking forward to this discussion for weeks, and I know that sounds disingenuous, but truly-
As we all have.
But I have truly been looking forward to it because some of the challenges that you may have had as board members, the staff has had also challenges administering this program. If you indulge me just for a few minutes, I'd like to, I'd like to set this up properly. And would you turn on the PowerPoint there?
PowerPoint.
So the, so the, as we see it, there are four broad issues, if you go to the issues there. There are four broad issues. The program has gone beyond its intent, its initial intent. The program is not asset-based. The program provides too much funding for employees of applicant organizations, and the program guidelines need to be clarified. The, the IGA, Metro's IGA, can you get to the right?
Those clickers.
The program's IGA has, Metro has had its own eligibility criteria. They require that, of course, the project be within the boundary area, the area boundary, and that they also require that it must meet, it must benefit, it must benefit programs or individuals located inside the area. That means it could have been outside, but they have to benefit the people within the boundary area. They could, they could be outside of Oregon City. The applicant had to be a 501(c)(3). It could be a school or institution of higher learning. It could, it, it can't promote religion or prohibit religion. It can't discriminate on a variety of some of the categories that you see here, and the project has to be, can't be located on private, well, if the project is located on private property, the project application must establish a clear public benefit, and must have permission from the property owner, of course, to, for the property owner to be involved. Also, next slide, please. The IGA goals, in terms of their goals, they stated that improvement to the appearance or environmental quality of the neighborhood was important. Metro required that there should be a reduction in toxicity or increased reuse and recycling opportunities. They were expecting that the program would upgrade real or personal property owned or operated by nonprofit. Preservation or enhancement of wildlife was important to the, to Metro, and improvement to increase in recreational, increase recreational areas and programs. Safety was another area of concern by Metro, and the projects must benefit youth, seniors, low-income persons, or other underserved, underserved populations. Next slide, please. There were three goals that were added by Oregon City back in the day, actually, prior to my arrival. Increase the attractiveness or market value of residential, commercial, commercial residential properties, increase employment and economic opportunities, and enhance art and culture within the city. Now, next slide, please. We did a regional comparison of eight organizations, and as you can see there, they are, you can see their logos of the various communities that we talked to with regard to how they operated their program. Next slide, please. There are eight that you saw there in the region, and each has an enterprise grant award, a committee. They all have a committee. Five committees do not hear applicant testimony, which was interesting. Only three committees include all of the local elected officials. None of the programs require matching funds. None require letters of support. Next slide, please. As we see it, we wanted to talk with you about some of the major issues before we get into any kind of little nitty-gritty, but the major issues that this program is facing, that's what we call the tier one issues. Would the committee want program funds to be spent only on hard assets, sidewalks, what have you? And in terms of original intent, as the mayor mentioned, there were a lot of environmental landfill remediation questions and goals that Metro wanted to, to address. And would the committee want to narrow the type of projects to focus more on environmental-based activities, getting back to its original intent, as the mayor had mentioned? Next slide, please. Tier one issues. Oregon, Oregon's goal, Oregon City's had additional goals, and as it said, you see the three there, and I just mentioned them a few moments ago, enhance art and culture, increase employment, and increase the attractiveness or market value of residential, commercial, residential. So the question would be, does the committee or would the committee want to remove these community-based goals or develop new ones? So that's a question there. In terms of, next slide, please. Then we have tier two goals, which are administrative ones. Administratively, we require a certain percentage, 60% specifically, but we require a certain percentage of Oregon City residents to be directly impacted. We also require a percentage of enhancement grant funding towards city departments. At the moment, it's 20% threshold for city departments. There's a cash and/or in-kind match. We do require less support. We do require a percentage of administrative costs for mailing, printing, insurance, et cetera, which is around 10% or less. The number of times an applicant can reapply, we actually said, as long as the program is good and we, and the committee wants to do it, that they can come back and reapply over and over again. Next slide, please. Tier two, yes. And continuing on the tier two administrative guidelines, the question is, should staff do more than simply a review of eligibility requirements? And in the past, we've simply just going, as staff, we have just simply been going down the line in terms of just the black and white issues, I'm not, black and white guidelines. Are you a 501(c)(3)? Are you, do you have a form of, of your, are you, do you have the, are you with a university or a school or that type of thing? Does the committee want staff to serve more as a filter of projects and conduct a greater level of due diligence? A lot of times, we see projects that say that they want to attain or they can attain certain goals, and after reading the application, we, we don't see the connection. But we've left that decision up to you because we didn't want to get into all of that. Then there are some projects that are just blatantly, you shouldn't even see, but you shouldn't, you shouldn't see them based on, not regulation, but do they really address the essence of what the program is all about? And we didn't want to make that decision either. So does the application, so we have to ask the question, and staff want to know, if the committee agrees, can the, can the employees or employee or the staff review these applications to make sure that they comply with the essence of the program's goals identified by the applicant himself? So that was one of the questions that we had of the committee, because really, as I think some of you had mentioned before, this should be a joy. This should be fun. But the real crux comes in when we, it's fun when you have all, when you have enough money and go to go around. Everybody leaves happy, and you had a good meeting. The real crux of it is when you don't have enough resources to go around, and then you have to make some hard decisions. And then you also have to delve right into the essence of what the, what the project is trying to do, and there's some, maybe some argument, disagreement amongst some of you as well as those in the audience, and that's what makes it a bit tense for the program. So there will always be a degree of tension, particularly in situations where the resources don't go as far as they could, and that, and that's, that's just the nature of the beast. So I wanted to take the time, next slide, please, to, to lay all this out for you, to pose these important questions, and ask that we first look at the big issues, like the tier one issues first, and have a discussion because that's fundamental. What do you want to fund? What do you want to do with regard to the program? So I will turn it back over to the mayor.
Well, I think we should start at the beginning, and can you go back to that first tier one slide? Yeah, go back to the first, yeah, the first slide, I think. You and I have had, Michael and I have had similar concerns and, and issues, and I think that's fundamentally, wait a minute, before we get there, would you like to say anything?
I guess from my perspective, I've been here at the table as a local elected six cycles, seven cycles now, and we've had years on Zoom during COVID, we've had years in the, in the real room with real people in front of us.
And I recognize that it gets harder and more complicated when you are in that dynamic of being face-to-face and not over Zoom, so really appreciate that this is a good moment to reevaluate. In terms of comparison to the other Metro Enhancement Grant Committees, one thing I would add is I think we're at least double the amount of money of any of those other committees. So some of them are actually quite small in what they give out, but most of them tap out and top out at about $150,000, whereas we're in the $300,000, $400,000. That's just because of our volume of tonnage and who's paying. So I think more money, more problems might apply here. And I just also really want to emphasize that this is a partnership between Metro and Oregon City, just like all of the other Metro Enhancement Grant are between the local community and Metro, and how the district boundary is defined is different. So the project being all, the project area being all of Oregon City is Oregon City's kind of side of the bargain there. In other places, it's just a concentric circle with the station, and it's drawn, and it doesn't matter what the jurisdiction is, right? So you have in East County, the jurisdictional line covers parts of Gresham, parts of Troutdale, parts of Wood Village, so you have multiple jurisdictions working together there, whereas here, even though the transfer station's kind of on the edge, I think because of the history of Oregon City, Metro says, yes, let's make this an Oregon City controlled process, even though I think in other terms, you would have seen Gladstone or Unincorporated want to have a voice in it, but that's just not the history of how this has developed and is where we are today.
It was a dot and then a circle was drawn around it. That's, that was the original boundary and the original, very first agreement.
Yeah.
Mike, would you like to lead off with the asset-based funding, because I know you have some, some opinions about that, if you would, please?
Yeah. I've expressed several times, looking for something that has some lasting element. Maybe that's something physical, maybe it's a training program that, you know, people are trained and are going to, you know, be in the community, doing good things longer, but I don't think we can get to, if we wanted to, I don't think we can get to that because one of the goals, and these are the metro goals, not the ones, not the three that we added, item G is result in progress that benefit youth, seniors, low-income persons, or underserved populations, and those don't necessarily have a physical component. So an idea that I was actually going to talk about later when we were talking about scoring, but I'll, but I'll throw it out now, is a way to get in that direction and maybe give preference to longer-lasting projects would be to ask a question about what are the benefits of this project beyond the grant year, and then add to the scoring, describe, or, how do I word that? Does the- Does the project have an impact in Oregon City that lasts beyond the grant year? So then, even though there might be projects that don't have physical components, we could at least analyze whether or not they'd last longer than just, I was going to bring up an example, but I won't. I think you know what I mean.
But you also, just, but you also realize that while Metro has their goals expressed in the IGA, Oregon City can also have its goals. And the program, the IGA allows the locale to come up with its own, with additional goals.
Right, right, but that one is a Metro goal.
No, that's an Oregon City goal.
No, the projects that benefit youth, seniors, and underserved, that's a Metro goal.
Yes.
So we would have projects without a physical component that would qualify under that goal. But that doesn't mean that we couldn't add, have some points.
Additional criteria.
Yeah.
My big problem with that goal has been from day one, is that we never get to see how they are quantifying it or qualifying it. We don't know. And that's one of the things that I've had concerns about, is that when we tell them it has to be a certain percentage, I don't have any level of comfort that they're actually doing that. And that's my problem with it, is that the money needs to be spent in Oregon City, the project needs to be in Oregon City, and I understand we have a fluid boundary with our school district boundary, we have other boundaries that are not our physical confines of our city limits. But I have a really hard time when I get told that, oh, yes, we're serving X many percent, but they don't have any data to back it up, and it's just nebulous. And it's not that I don't feel that those programs are important, it's just there's not a good way to get the information. We need to give me a level of comfort that we are doing what we need to do by spending the money that benefit our citizens. And so I lean more towards making it much more physical-based, because again, as one of you said at the last meeting, you know, you can touch it, you can see it, you can smell it, you can, whatever it is, it's there, and we can say, yes, this money was spent on making this improvement. And people get that. When you tell them it went for a staff person for a training program, and there are residual benefits down the road, they don't, they don't see that, they don't, they can't make that connection. And I think we have a hard time making that connection. And I don't want to see this money being used to fund staff positions, because that's not really what it should be doing. And it's not that these programs are not worthy, I just don't think that this is that program. And so it says Metro, and it's an enhancement, so what are we enhancing by having a, you know, an ADA access, you know, from Holcomb Boulevard down to Redland Road? You know, we can say, yes, we can go down and walk Abernathy Creek and see, I mean, there's a difference between where the work they've been doing and the part where it's not being done. It's markedly remarkable how much they've been able to clean up and clear out, and so now we've got fish coming through there. So I just, you know, if we, we have the best of intentions, and I think our applicants have the best of intentions, but I get the feeling over like the last four years, it's just been, ooh, there's money, let's just throw something at the wall, and we'll see if it sticks, and we'll apply for it. And that's, I, that's not, that doesn't help us, and that doesn't help the community.
Thank you. I agree with a lot of what you both said, and I agree with the addition of a question that asks something along the lines of how will this last into the future? And I think getting to that same concern that you were talking about, I personally, when I'm looking at the goals that the city, of Oregon City, added, I would just suggest striking all of them except for the arts and culture one, because the attractiveness and market value one is already addressed in the Metro goals, and the employment opportunities one, getting to what the mayor said, grants, it is not good financial practice to use grants and one-time funding for staff positions, because whenever that money runs out, then you're scrambling to find something else. That's what we had to decide when we had our ARPA allocation as a city, and we did it toward one-time capital projects, and that's what I argued about a couple budget cycles ago, when we were talking about using opioid settlement funds to fund a caseworker position, which I supported getting the caseworker, but I did not support using settlement funds, because those are finite resources, and sooner or later, that would affect the operations of the police department. So all of that to say, I think that we're putting our nonprofits and community organizations in a similar position when we're allowing employment opportunities to be one of the criteria, and I don't think that that sets them up for success either. So I would suggest just taking that out entirely.
How does everybody feel about that, as people, do we agree? I see nodding.
Yes.
Yeah, looks like we have general consensus to say, yeah, we need to remove that. And I agree with you about the one, you know, how do you quantify the market value of, you know, a residential? Now, we could say increase the attractiveness if it's improving the property, that could be a criteria, but market value, that's anybody's guess as to what the heck that's supposed to be. And we did have, you know, as you know, an applicant tell us that, and we're like, okay, how does that do that? They don't know.
Well, plus, if it's.
Every applicant says that. Every applicant says that, checks that, we'll all mutually.
Yeah, and that, the market value, that would be private property, and I don't think spending public money to increase the market value of somebody's public or private property makes sense. So are you suggesting eliminating H and I?
I don't have the letters in front of me, but I would suggest.
Did everybody, he, we got these at the last.
That one, back one.
The criteria, so, yeah, I've got, these are numbered on the sheet, it's one through four, so, yep.
Yeah, so among the ones that we added to the Metro goals, the only one I would consider keeping is the enhanced art and culture one, because the first one, I'm reading from the Metro one right here, and the first goal from Metro is result in an improvement to the appearance or environmental quality of the area slash neighborhood within the enhancement area boundaries. And I feel that that basically gets to the heart of what we're trying to get there.
Why don't we just substitute that?
Well, that's why I'm saying to eliminate that.
Oh, no, I agree.
And then to eliminate the employment one for the reasons I just said, and keep the enhanced art and culture one.
And so how would we, I think we need to be a little more prescriptive, because what is, what is enhance art and culture?
I think that's, the applicant will explain that.
The applicant will explain?
Yeah.
Well, I wouldn't want to be too prescriptive on that.
Well, I agree, but, you know.
I think the onus of explanation would be on the applicant to prove that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I like the statement you read. It's much clearer instead of the market value. Anything else we would want to revise or eliminate?
Well, I agree with Commissioner Morrow. Eliminate the first two and leave the third one as is.
Okay. So we are saying, so is there sort of a general agreement or consensus about funding hard assets?
Go ahead, Eric.
I have some comments about that. I mean, I think if the committee decides that this pot of money is to be used for physical items, you know, obviously, I will respect that, but I feel obligated to mention, you know, as someone who's submitted, you know, countless grant applications, that for the organizations that I've worked for, you know, all of them nonprofits, what keeps those organizations alive, the things that they need from their grant funds, a majority of those things are not physical items. They just, they just aren't. I mean, some, a lot of the nonprofits I've worked for, they wouldn't have any physical items that they could request, so that would make this pot of funding not available to them. So.
Maybe it shouldn't be.
Yeah, if that's what we decide, then, you know, then that's our decision, but, you know, I feel like I have to, I feel like I need to throw that perspective out there.
And I just want to clarify what I said, because I agree with what you just said, and I want to make sure that while I, I would prefer the tangible assets, and maybe there's a way to get to that in the scoring, I don't think that it should be closed off to those organizations. I think this would just add an additional bonus for organizations who choose to apply for these projects. But on the other hand, I would also say that this program isn't to boost up nonprofits either. The program exists so that we can enhance the community, whether that's through a neighborhood association, through one of our departments, through the school district, through a, through a nonprofit.
I think, I think that's an important distinction.
I, yeah.
So, non?
Go ahead, Marie.
I think the one thing I would be concerned about is whether this becomes a continual operating cost versus a one-time project funding. You know, and I know they can get extensions, I know that they can come back another time, but if this is what, this specific grant is what businesses rely on to be funded, that's a concern.
And we've had several applicants who've come over and over and over again that it's employment-based, it's paying for their staff, and again, you correctly stated, if you're using it to fund your staff, that's not where we really, you know, we don't want to be having that be, you know, relied upon, because it's, like you said, it's not, it's not sustainable over the long term. And I know there are not a lot of grants that fund, you know, admin, and, but they are out there, they are there. But there's also, in our area, not a lot of programs that will fund, you know, wetland restoration, you know, enhancing, you know, street art or something to that, I mean, they're just not, in our community, there's, they don't exist. If they do, they're pretty minimal.
And I would add that we do require them to have some kind of a match as well.
Oh, I agree, you've got to have skin in the game.
That could also be something where if they go into it knowing that they will not be able to cover administrative costs, then perhaps that allows them to seek a specific partner grant that will.
And I also just want to say, I think the key thing here is we're not funding a staff position. We might be funding people to do specific work on the project, but we're not funding an ongoing staff position, and I think that's, I needed to clarify that in my mind, because some of these projects, we do need to hire, they do need to hire people to do specific things. They might have to have some expertise as opposed to an ongoing person, and I think that's where things got a little dicey this last round.
And the round before that, we've had two, three applicants that this is funding a specific position to do X. Where we had the nebulous, okay, are you serving Oregon City residents, or is it like everybody?
The other thing, when you're talking about serving Oregon City residents or not, some of the enhance art and culture things, it's very hard to qualify or quantify Oregon City residents, and we funded quite a few things that were pretty gray in that area as far as being able to quantify that. I, I don't know personally if we, how strict we need to be about that, how important that is, because the Metro is kind of located on the edge of everything, and it's kind of coming and going across a broad area, but.
That's a good point. There are some of these that you just can't measure, you know, we funded a mural on Railroad Avenue. How are you going to say 60% of the people that drive by are Oregon City residents? You certainly can't quantify that in any way.
It's a physical asset, that's going to be physically.
Right, but we have it, we have elsewhere in our requirement.
Look at the Oregon Art Alliance.
60% of it, I forget how it's worded, but 60%.
The thing was, they buy most of their lunches in Oregon City, come on.
Yeah, I know, I love that one.
You know, and, but we funded them, and we funded them two years in a row, so.
Rocky thoughts? Same. You don't, I know, you know, you're going to be angry here a little bit, so we want to make sure to get your thoughts.
I honestly forgot about this meeting until the last minute, it was like, oh, gosh, I thought I had a night free, and then thankfully, I realized I, I knew it, and then today it went out of my mind. I don't know how much you're going to say tonight, because I know we'll go back to all this in a couple years anyway, again. I'll be on my break at that time, but I may come back at some point in a few years. I've never been fully happy with it, as we've said before. I think on the tier one issues, I agree with kind of what we've been talking about. I definitely don't want to, so I agree with Commissioner Morrow about removing the two, the enhance art and culture, I think is important to keep there. And just so you know, too, even though these were not original, these bullet points here, they've been on as long as I can remember. But I agree with the two being removed, because I think it's addressed in other ways. So definitely want to see the art and culture one stay there, especially because we are, you know, having a limited amount of options for grants in that, in that area, and I think it definitely does go to enhance the community. We know that through just our surveys about how events and projects like that enhance the community. Are we going to, I don't know if we're moving on to the other things yet.
Can you flip to the next slide? No, it was tier one, there was a tier one continue, I thought.
Okay.
There was two tier one.
Yeah. I agree on what's been said about asset-based, but I also agree that there should be not an exclusion of other projects, because I think so many, there's been a lot of projects that have come to us that are broader than asset, that are, that are, I think, some of the more important, some, have been some of the more important programs that we've seen over the years, but that gives us some space to kind of take those each and look at them. I, I don't know if I want to talk about sidewalks tonight.
Well, I think that was the wrong, I think that was the wrong word to put in there.
No, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying it wasn't a horrible idea to bring it up. Obviously, we have issues with sidewalks throughout the city, obviously, we have an inability to fix all of the problems with sidewalks. I think it does, I mean, adding sidewalks as an enhancement, maybe not the most amazing enhancement throughout the city, but.
What if it goes to a park or, you know, something like that, that.
I mean, it's, I think it's one of those things that shouldn't be excluded, I mean, I'm sure there's projects that would be very beneficial to.
Do you remember the nonprofit that came in and wanted us to help pave their driveway?
Oh, see, I wouldn't.
And they weren't even in the boundary?
I know.
Right, yeah, I don't, I don't think things like that.
I know, I think that was pretty obvious.
So, yeah, I mean, there's clearly asset-based ones that we're going to say absolutely no to as well, right?
Well, that gets to the point, is I would like staff to do a hard screen.
Yeah.
I don't want to see 15 applications and we have to filter them, because if they don't meet the basic criteria, you know, they need to be set aside elsewhere. I, I think that that would, it's valuable. We only have a certain amount of time, and we want to be conscientious to the applicants that meet the criteria and those sorts of things, and then we be, you know, we're the judge. I mean, I, I personally have, I didn't actually intend to be involved in the last Metro Enhancement Grant, but the person that was in charge of it left town, and I had to, I had to finish it and do the closeout, because I was the only other person in our neighborhood that knew anything about it. But I've done one before, when I was in the Neighborhood Steering Committee, and it's probably one of the easiest grants I've ever filled out myself, and I've done some pretty hard ones. And so I think that having staff take a look at it and, you know, do the screen is where we need to be. I just don't think we have that many brain cells left to scrutinize 20 or 30 applications that come in and.
I've, I've got a little concern with that. Yeah, I don't have a problem with staff analyzing, okay, here's, here's the goals, here's the ones they say they hit, do they hit any of the goals? Check, with the basic requirements.
Right.
But I don't, I don't want staff making subjective calls, and not, it's not a reflective, not a reflection on staff. If there's going to be hard feelings over a grant not getting funded, it should come on to all of us, not on the staff.
I agree.
So we just have.
So it would come from staff as, these are our recommendations because of this, and here's the other ones that were submitted that we don't recommend, but within this group, we may have a conversation that those ones that didn't get marked at the staff level might be acceptable as a project, is that?
So I was going to suggest something pretty similar, because I, I'm coming from a similar position as you. position as you where I would prefer that the final decision be made by the committee.
Yes.
My concern is that in addition to just the subjective standards that individuals can, different individuals can have when they're reading through these applications, I've heard from multiple applicants about what they perceive at least as moving goalposts. And so to completely take that out of the picture, I would prefer that, yes, there'd be a screening process where staff is able to say, yes, this was met, this was not met, here's our recommendation. But I would also suggest to build on top of that, that applicants are required to go to some sort of pre-app, if you will, as we do for certain developments in our community. We require developers to go to pre-app conferences so that they're aware of what's expected of them. And I think that it would be helpful for potential and prospective applicants to be required to attend some sort of event so that they're made aware of what our standards are, especially because they're probably going to be changing tonight and what will be expected of them.
So, what you're, what you're getting at is that when we do bids, bids for the City of Oregon City or any jurisdiction, there's a mandatory pre-bid meeting. If you do not show up to the mandatory pre-bid meeting, you do not get to bid. And I think that's what you're suggesting, is that the pre-submital, most, most nonprofits, and I think you would agree, are now requiring that, that they have a session ahead of time and they check to see whether you've been there looking at it. And I think that, do we have a consensus that we want to make that mandatory? Because I know we've had several people say, oh, I didn't go to it because I already knew what to do. And then that didn't, wasn't the case. Yes, Christine?
I feel torn because I do think that having communication before final submission is really important. I also think that the standard for having somebody show up to a pre-thing works in particular for bids for the city for projects because there's a lot of staffing behind those organizations. And some of the very successful projects we've funded over the years have been neighborhood level zero paid staff. And I would feel like putting that kind of requirement, even with the most passionate and capable volunteers, they're, they're juggling too much. So, if it could be a recorded Zoom that you have to watch, if there's an option to watch it on your own time, or at least have the flexibility recognizing that some of the people we're going to be trying to get together with are going to be harder to schedule, then I'm okay. But if it's a one and done, if you don't come in this window of time, you've missed your opportunity, I don't feel comfortable. I'm thinking back to like Lotteret Park, right? That was like a Girl Scout troop with like three troop leaders and a neighborhood association attached to it. I don't think they would have made a meeting and they, they were certainly deserving of this investment.
I'm, I'm trying to think of how you can require, how you can, how you can tell whether or not someone has seen a, a, a video. If that's going to be a requirement that they, if they can't show up, then how do you know they reviewed the video?
Ask them to check a box attesting that they did. I mean, people don't lie about watching a 30-minute Zoom.
So, I mean, the ultimate goal of this would be for people to submit their application correctly and completely right, successfully. I, I don't, I don't like the idea of a mandatory, like, meeting. I think it does have an additional barrier that may prevent some, you know, good applications coming through. But what I would say is just making it simple, if we have requirements, having, you know, staff just say, did it check the boxes of A, B, C, D, E, whatever the requirements are? And if it's a complete application, it comes to the committee. And if it's incomplete, it just doesn't come to us because it's not a finished application. And if somebody doesn't complete an application or they're missing pieces because they forgot to turn something in, you know, and they could have like, oh, if I went to this meeting, I, I mean, that's kind of on them, is my opinion.
What I, what I was concerned about was is staff time. If you have an opening for a grant...
Right.
And everybody is calling them, trying to get the same information that they would do in a, you know, one half-hour session, here's how you do it, blah, blah, blah. I'm thinking about economies of scale.
Sure.
So, we could say strongly require, strongly encourage you to attend this, but not, I mean...
Or if, if we hold a session and we record it, would there be a way to make it just accessible so somebody calls?
That would be a good idea.
Says, I don't understand what to do, you can just say, watch the video, everything is there.
And then you have to attest that you did see it. Because again, you know, the project that I was involved in, the first one, it was all, it's as you said, it was our neighborhood association. We did go to a meeting that the city had, one of the project team did, so somebody was there and we got the information. So, it's not, it's not impossible. The city held it, one was during the day and one was in the evening, so we hit them both. So, I think if we do that and it gets recorded and they can request, hopefully they will request or we can say, here it is, please watch it. If they don't watch it, you know...
That's, that's on them. And like I said, if they submit an incomplete application...
But I think we have to do everything we can to try to make sure that the information is consistent and that they understand incomplete applications, just like any other application we have at the city. If your application is incomplete, it does not get to move forward.
Yeah, and, and that's the reason why I requested to, to at least talk about this is because what you just described is what we just went through when it was like, well, I thought that I did submit a complete application. Well, staff said you didn't, so why, where was this disconnected? Why can't we have this one point of communication?
It's like you were saying, you could get your application in, but was it received on the other end or vice versa? You know, you don't know what the, you know, the universe is. I mean, I literally, the last round, somebody called me and said, oh, can I bring it to your house? And I said, absolutely not. I said, no, I'm not the convener of the, of the applications. I said, you need to get that to staff. I said, no, do not bring it to my house.
So, we heard a couple of things, just to...
Hang, hang on one more second.
Oh, I just wanted to add to a couple of the points that were made. If we record a video, we put it on the website with the application, with the description of the grant. They have every opportunity to go back, re-watch it multiple times on their own time and just assume that we gave them every opportunity. And if they turn it in incomplete, then it is what it is, you're not going to get considered.
Yeah, yes.
Makes sense.
So, just to, just to keep things moving along here, so asset-based funding, everybody seems to be in agreement with that in general. Also, that is not excluded.
Strongly.
So, that's where the judgment comes in that the staff can't make. Because, so because you, so, because there are going to be certain, certain applications that are not going to be asset-based, but you, you very well may like. And quite, when, when you're dealing with money and you're distributing, you're reviewing applications, either it's going to be one thing or the other, very seldom it's going to be everything or in between or... So, I, I, that's, that's the challenge that a staff would have because I can see myself reviewing an application for a, a grant that would, I don't know, that would hire someone to teach math or to hire someone to, to sing or to play something. And would I say no because it's not, it's not asset-based? Or maybe it is, I don't know, I have to ask the committee.
Can I, can I just throw something out? Maybe what, is what we're trying to get to, realizing that some of them will not be hard assets, is what we're trying to get to, we want to make sure that we're not funding staff positions that are part of the organization's regular operations. If it's funding positions, it's only directly related to the project.
But what about these...
Is that what we're trying to get to?
Well, we have, we've, we've had these projects ongoing and ongoing and ongoing.
Okay, but are they, but are they delivering the project or are they operating the group?
I have no idea because I have no idea whether the one that's dealing with the people who are getting their records expunged, we've not gotten any information that there's a specific person that's doing that, but they're from everywhere. So, while it's a great idea and it's, you know, I, I support that, is that an enhancement grant? I don't know.
Well, I think that what the commissioner had just asked question, are we trying to get to, what we, what we're trying to get to is, first of all, it's asset-based, yes. Two, we're not funding organizations, we're not funding organizations that come asking for personnel costs strictly, just to keep running their organization. We've agreed to that.
So, Mike, are you talking about, so for instance, let's say I apply for a grant, I need to hire a person to do cleanup on Clackamette Cove, but it's that, it's project-specific, this is what that person is going, is that kind of what you're talking about, something like that, rather than, oh, I belong to ABC Environmental Group and I'm hiring the staff person and they might work on that, but that's not what they're, that's not why we're hiring them. It's other things that, they do a lot of other things. So, I mean, are we talking project-specific?
Project, project-specific salaries.
And again...
Would be okay, but organization operations salary would not be.
And I don't see where the difference is between that. I'm, I'm trying in my head to understand how...
Well, because one is, one is supporting a project and the other is supporting an organization.
Well, but the person who gets hired to support that project is supporting the organization. I mean, I'm trying, I can see it in both ways. I mean, I could use a specific example of somebody that's applied for one and I still, while it's a good project, I still don't have a clear understanding of how it's an enhancement project. You know, if I am, if I, if they're hired, well, let me just use the one where they're doing expunging people's records. That is a staff position within that particular organization and that's what that person does or is supposed to be, is, is doing. So, that is a regular staff person that is doing that job that's on their payroll. It's not like they created that program and then once the program's done, that staff position goes away because they keep coming back over and over and over again. So, I don't, I don't see the difference between project-specific versus their regular staff person. So, I mean, maybe somebody else can explain it. I'm not saying I'm against it or for it, I'm just saying I don't understand how the, what the difference is.
It's, I, I agree, it's not necessarily a clear distinction.
It's very unclear.
I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, okay. Two things, I would think that if we want to go back to the tangible assets conversation, could we just say project, uh, applications that have a tangible outcome are pref, are get preference over ones that don't? Like maybe they are considered first and then whatever money we decide we have remaining can be possibly divided up between the ones that are kind of in the background. But to the staffing question, I could see perhaps, you know, if they're doing, like there was that, that mural project that was going to be in conjunction with the tribes, if it's somebody specialized for that specific one, you know, somebody's an expert in bee life cycles or bee habitats, you know, for a specific project, then maybe that could be, if there's a strong delineation between the two and it's a one-time project cost, that may be something, but unfortunately that also would include some type of auditing.
Right.
Your lightness.
I just want to say that, you know, I, I feel that nonprofits understand, you know, when they are asking for funding for a position, that they know that that funding coming from the funder is not going to be ongoing and that they know that if they want that position to be ongoing, that they're going to have to do additional fundraising from other sources. I think that's just, that's just something that they're aware of. So, there's not an expectation that this, this one pot of money would be funding this position indefinitely. If, if that's, if that's the issue. I had another, I had another thought that I just lost.
It'll come back around.
Well, from the staff perspective, when someone comes in and asks for funding to, to fund a staff position, we have to ask for documentation.
Oh.
Like payroll. I don't feel comfortable looking at someone's payroll.
I don't, that's why I don't want to even go there.
And looking at taxes. And, and some people say, well, this person's going to be a match, in-kind match, but this person's been working for my organization for years, but we're going to do this special project, we're going to keep them on. And so that means that I would have to go through and look at payroll.
It's too complicated.
I think my, my, my thought came back. I think the issue of, you know, them showing that they've done what they said they were going to do, that may be kind of just more of a reporting issue. I mean, do, do we, this question, do we require a final report from those that get funded?
We don't see those and we need, you know, again, I feel like half the time I'm in the dark.
Because I think the issue there isn't whether or not that person was staff, but that they do need to demonstrate in the report. And so maybe that's an issue of there are some questions that need to be added to the report that we would see that would indicate that they, you know, can somehow prove that they did what they say, say that they did. And, and if they don't, you know, in theory, you could, you could ask for those funds back. I know probably nobody wants to do that, but...
Oh, you mean clawback?
Yeah, but if, if they can't prove, if they can't show that they've done what they said they were going to do in the report, whether it's a staff person or a mural or whatever, I mean, obviously that would be...
Well, is your mural, you can go out and see it. It's, you can, you can, it's done or it's not done. Whereas a staff person, to me, it's, we're getting into some really weird stuff where we're looking, that staff, we have to be looking at documents that, well, they frankly make me uncomfortable.
So, what are you suggesting?
I think that it is much simpler to have it tied back to a tangible asset because we know whether it's going to get done or not.
But the problem is some of the projects don't have a tangible asset.
I know.
Some of the things that we fund.
And I haven't, I haven't figured out how to reconcile that in my head.
So, I've been trying to think about that literal issue because I, I don't, I don't like the idea of like, again, hard assets, right? Because I think they're great projects that wouldn't have a hard asset, but there are options, really focusing on like the physical enhancement of the city, right? Which may not have a hard asset. So, just as a, I don't know, say there's a, a group of folks in a neighborhood that says they want to do a stream cleanup, right? And they want money to be able to do that. There's not a hard asset in that, but you can physically demonstrate that the stream was cleaned, right?
You have the before and the after.
Right, you have a before and an after, but there's not a hard asset.
Well, but the stream is the hard asset.
But they didn't add, they didn't create a hard asset.
No, they, we weren't saying that they're creating one.
I understand, but like, I, anyway.
We, we have had that. I mean, the group that got the grant for the cleanup and replanting, we, we saw the before and then we're going to see the after. And like I said, some of it, I mean, I actually walked the one they did the last time because I asked to see it and it's like, whoa, you have the old picture.
So, I think, so I would recommend getting to everything that has just been discussed. Uh, one, wanting to make sure that it's open to different projects that include tangible results and others that don't, while at the same time putting an emphasis on it, why don't we just add that to one of our scoring guidelines? And then it's, it's up to each of us individually to put the numerical assignment that we decide personally whether their tangible asset or not is enough to increase the score. And then whenever it comes out in the average and it shows all the rankings, then it can be determined there.
How does everybody feel about that?
I like that.
Additional points?
Okay.
Yep. All right. On the second question up there, I don't...
Wait, Christine has her hand up.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to hop in that there are probably varying levels of, just like you were pointing out, that the criteria for benefit, you have seniors, low income and underserved populations, it's going to be harder to always tie that to a physical asset. For me, the reduced toxicity and increased reuse and recycling feels very tied to this program. And there are definitely some hard components to that, but a lot of them are going to be service and education focused. And I just want us to think through which of these criteria is going to be more important to do the kind of service side than, you know, just one more recycling box out there in the world isn't going to change things. Having an intentional program of education and a drive will change things. So, I do think in some places we're going to want to lean in, but again, it's the metrics. How many, maybe not tons, how many pounds of reuse did you push through your, your organization?
How many tires did you take out of the creek?
Yeah, yeah. So, really focused on measurement as opposed to physicality.
And I think a part of what I was suggesting gets back to what Commissioner Mitchell suggested earlier on, which was a question along the lines of how will your project impact last into the future? And I'm, I'm sure just like the real market value question, everyone's going to find a way to, to spin up something. going to find a way to, to spin up something. You know, some organization is going to say, these children are going to live well-fulfilled lives well into the future, and we will each have it in ourselves to weigh that as we please.
Like, how's that happen?
It'll be in the scoring.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to see that. That's so subjective.
So, probably is. When we do our scoring, it's all subjective.
No, no, I'm talking about, you know, that these children in the future will grow up to be healthy, wealthy, and wise. I mean, I don't know how we put a box about, around that.
So it sounds as if, just by, based on this discussion, it sounds as if you've already decided on the, one of these ques, the second question. Would the committee want to narrow the type of projects to focus on more environmental-based activities? And the answer is not necessarily.
Right.
Right? That would be, would that be fair?
But we've talked about giving preference to that because, again, if we're talking about remediating the impacts of the transfer station, that's one of them.
So that would be weighted a little heavier than some, maybe something else, something else?
Yes, let's flip to tier two.
But again, that's something that you can do for yourself in the scoring.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, because that already is included.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. Tier two, a percentage of employees of residence, a percentage of environmental enhancement grant funding to city departments, the match, well, you said you wanted match. I think people wanted the match. Letters of support, what about that?
I think we need to go through these one at a time.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, let's do that. Percentage of employee, uh, percentage of OC residents directly impacted.
Again, we're back to the measurement. There's so many of them you can't measure.
I don't like this question.
That's what I have a problem with. It's got to, somehow we have to have a measurement because I don't feel comfortable-
But you can't, some of them you can't measure.
I know, but I don't feel comfortable spending city money on something that doesn't benefit the people that live here. I mean, I've heard you say that over and over and over again, that we need to make sure we have, that we keep, you know, not just with this, but with things that we do.
Understood, but how can you put a number on some of those? Like, I'll go back to the mural. There's no way to know how many people are directly impacted and where they're from on a mural that's on a public street.
Well, that would get a higher rating because it's got a physical, you can touch it.
What?
Or a symphony.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I feel from the last round of applications that this number was kind of pulled out of a hat, honestly, for a lot of the applications.
Totally.
And if we're focusing on hard assets, tangible, like it's easy, is it in city or it's not? Right? That's, that's pretty simple. I don't, I don't like this question. I don't think it's a good measure. I don't think it was helpful in the decision-making process. I would be in favor of getting rid of it entirely.
Yeah, I would agree, and I would suggest that in its place, we could ask something that's a little more qualitative rather than quantitative. I think we could ask, how will your project impact residents who live within the city limits of Oregon City? Not how many, but how will it impact the people? Because it still gets to the matter of us trying to make sure that this goes directly back into our city, but it isn't necessarily asking them to estimate how many Oregon City residents will benefit from a mural.
Well, that's almost, I'm sorry.
And I would hop in, if we are looking at residents served, I would also say Oregon City-based businesses served, right? Like, if, if, if we're helping the business community here, we're helping the residents here, and there may be more businesses served than we can count residents, but for me, it's equal.
It's, it's equal. Well, I think your comment about people pulling it out of their hat was-
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Most of it, it was just not credible to me. It, it just, it was the spaghetti thing.
To Commissioner Morrow's comment, right off our score sheet, how will the Oregon City community benefit, the Oregon City community benefit from this project? What is the estimated number of people who will be positively affected? Right in our scoring.
So I think getting rid of that second part, the actual estimation, I would be open to hearing them try and explain how it's going to impact Oregon City residents. And again, all of these questions, no matter what questions we ask, we're always going to get answers where someone pulls it out of a hat and tries to meld it to fit into the, the application. I think that the first part of the question gets to what we're trying to get to, but the second part of it needlessly complicates it and gets to what Commissioner Wilson said.
Take out, I agree with you. We'd have to take out the word "community" because community is broader than, you know-
So change it, how will the, how will residents of Oregon City?
Yes, residents of Oregon City.
And take out the estimate part.
Yes.
Because if they want to build a narrative on how they think it impacts the first part, then that will help my decision-making, you know, so.
All right. So that's going to change on the score sheet and it's going to have to change on the application.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's the beauty of this process.
It also makes it a tenable job for the staff to try and go through and quantify all those things. Because I know with the farmer's market, that became a nightmare to try and verify everyone's addresses and everything, and that's why they did not, they did not reapply for a grant again.
Nope, that is not why they didn't reapply. I asked very specifically, that had nothing to do with it. I sat, I sat there at the last two farmer's markets, I was talking to them, and they were, when they had the grant, and they, they were asking, it was very, very benign, and they just said, you know-
No, they did ask for everyone, but it made it-
But it wasn't, it wasn't-
They did not cycle, they did not get their money in a timely manner.
That was why they didn't apply.
Right. Because the staff had to verify those addresses retroactively. It's not that the farmer's market might be asking, they had a very good general way of asking.
They did, and it was very, it was very, yeah, because when I went up, they said, are you resident of the city of Oregon City? And I checked the box and I said, yeah.
You better be.
No, so it's the turnaround time on the grant. So anyway, so-
Next question.
So you're saying we're taking out that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You, you said that percentage is 20%?
Yes, 20% of it.
Is that in the IGA or is that-
No, that's, that's something that you all decided.
Okay.
You have a limit in the IGA though.
You, you have a limit in terms of payment to the city.
Yeah.
I think it's like, I think it's 20% to pay for administrative costs for the city operating the program.
Yeah.
But percentage of enhancement grant funding to city departments, are you, are you sticking to a percentage? I mean, are, 20% is what you had before? And 20% total funding? It could be three departments, but it can't go over 20% of the entire partners available.
And that's the maximum?
That's the max.
That works for me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we're all okay with that.
For city purposes, city departments.
I think the letters of support are absolutely necessary, but I think we might change it so it isn't the business association or whatever it is, but why would you, why would, why would an organization come in and do a project in, in an area of the city where the people who are there, whoever they are, don't know anything about it?
Well, I would, I would respond that-
Sure.
Even with the letters of support, a lot of the residents don't know about these projects. And so the problem that I have with the letters of support is how easy it is to get them. They just go to the neighborhood association and they vote on it and they all got them. So that doesn't really add that much to the way that I factored it because it feels pretty much just like a rubber stamp.
I will tell you, in our neighborhood, your former neighborhood, it was not a rubber stamp. We had people come in and they explained-
And then they find another organization to get it, where they will get the rubber stamp.
Well, they had to get the neighborhood association in that particular area, and that, that neighborhood did not rubber stamp anything. I can tell you that.
But there are other ones that might.
I, I agree with Commissioner Morrow on this. I, if, if folks want to turn them in as part of their application, it's optional, great, get a letter of support, you can turn it in, but making it a hard requirement, I don't support that.
Go ahead.
In most cases, those are, I will say, those letters are probably written by the applicant and then sent to the organization to sign.
Not my neighborhood. I can tell you that.
So I, I, I don't think they, I don't think they really show us, I don't-
Let's everybody, let's just go with consensus, yes or no?
This is separate- Before we do that-
Sure.
I think you're going to go the same place I was, so go ahead.
This is separate for, it's on my, our property or it's on city property or whatever. These are bonus support letters.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, we're still going to require a letter from the city if it's on city property.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
We still require letters in all those other circumstances.
Sure.
Okay, so the last thing I'll say on the support letters is, if we do have it open, it shouldn't be like, okay, there's, there's got to be some way to make, if we do, and I think we're going away from this anyway, based on the conversation, but you're right, people are reaching out to all the neighborhoods or all the groups they can and getting letters, and so they're getting three or four letters because they think that the more letters they get, the better. And some of these projects, well, some neighborhoods are writing three or four letters to multiple projects. And so I think if there is letters coming from the neighborhood, they get one, they get to support one project from their neighborhood. And, you know.
I don't know how, yeah, I don't know how I feel about that. What I, what I find found weird was getting letters from patrons of whoever it was saying, oh, I love this organization and you should support it. That, that was so self-serving to me.
But people were doing it because we had this requirement for a letter of support.
It was very specific what we asked for, not from their patrons.
I understand that, but it turned into what felt to me like just busy work, like not meaningful enhancement of the application. People were checking a box because we said they had to check a box, and it-
And I don't want them to check just the box, I want them to be, so anyway, I, if they want to get letters, it's, it's just like you're applying for a job and you get references or letters of recommendation.
Yeah.
We could, you know, say if you want to do them, but it, it-
It not only creates busy work for the applicants, it created a lot of busy work for the neighborhood associations too, because of the flood of applicants that they were coming through.
Well, they all waited until the last-
They had to schedule special meetings, they had to send extra materials out to their members, so it was an additional burden on them as well.
Yeah, well, they, a lot of them waited until the last minute, which is-
So we're going to make them optional. Right?
I think if you have a really active neighborhood association like you do, it's great, but if you-
Don't.
If you don't, it's, it's really is prudensome. I think, I would, I think I would say something like, it's strongly recommended, it's going to, you know, it's going to look a lot more favorable on your application if you have letters of support and don't make them all look exactly the same.
Sorry, this is another question.
No, go ahead.
The 20% that we have said in the past for city projects, those are the projects that are directly coming from city departments. We do not, how do we factor the nonprofit organizations that are doing projects that only enhance a city park or city property and get a permission letter from the city? I mean, that's kind of like, how is that different than, than a city project? If, if the project is entirely in the park?
The Park Place neighborhood?
Right.
That project on Park Place Park.
Because saying city departments, that's, you know, we put that in place for like, okay, the city wants flower baskets, or the city wants this, because it's coming from directors, from staff, and, and my take in the past is, well, shouldn't that be in the budget? And I, okay with the fact that we've lowered that to account for that, but there's other projects, a lot of projects that benefit the city because, and I'm not saying, I don't know this for the fact, but to get beyond that 20%, any city staff could go to some organization and say, hey, why doesn't your neighborhood or your organization do this project in a park? Because it still benefits the park and it's really still a city project, but they're not being accounted for in that 20%.
So the park?
I don't know that we've div, I don't know whether they've separated those or thought about that.
Well, the Park Place park application.
Because to me, it's kind of falls in that 20%, it's still benefiting a city park.
That was, that was generated by neighborhood association. They didn't get a letter of support from the city.
I'm not talking about any specific project, I'm saying in general.
Well, no, I'm just using that as a-
If it's only, if it's an organization that's benefiting only a city park or a city property, then to me, if it's under that 20%, right?
Because basically what you, what you're saying is that someone could, someone who likes trees in city parks or plants or something could plant more flowers or something in a city park, and that's all they do, but it is, it benefits the city park, department. So that's basically, from the goodness of someone's intent, the city is still benefiting from that volunteer.
And not the city department, the city in general is benefiting.
Yes. So the question is, is that a bad thing or is it something?
I'm not necessarily saying it's bad or good, I'm just saying, you know, are, have we ever, I don't think when we put that 20% on there, that we had a conversation that it included or it did not include projects that benefited the city that were from a group outside the city.
I think we're making it complicated.
I don't, I don't have any problems. I could, I easily could see staff going to organizations or writing letters based on the fact that organizations are only supporting city parks, because then someone within the city parks could say, okay, well, that's, I can't pay for this part of my budget and we're already at the 20% of things that we've asked, so we're going to go find another organization to come on our behalf to do it. I, I mean-
I, I don't think that's going to-
Okay, so for me- You watch, because I think it absolutely will.
For me, it's more about who initiates it. So I would be fine if all of the applicants were coming from neighborhood associations and saying, we want to do something in one of the Oregon City Parks, that would be fine with me. And I still believe that our, our department should be entitled to 20% of, up to 20%. And that's important, is it's up to, it's a cap. It's not saying that at the very minimum, we're going to be doing 20%. It's the up to 20%.
I agree.
So I think that making that distinction as to who initiates the project is what makes the difference for me, because if there are a bunch of projects of neighborhood associations wanting to do things that directly impact Oregon City public property, I don't think that should necessarily get in the way of our departments being able to propose something as well.
Okay, but are we okay with the fact that, let's say that 20 of the projects out of 30 projects that get applied are all on city property and they're all getting letters from the city and that's-
Well, we're not talking about letters anymore.
They're getting permission.
Well, yeah, you have to have a letter to be on city property, so that's essentially-
They're getting permission to do that project on city property.
You still have to have a letter from the city to do it on, right? So that's a letter of, of support in itself.
I agree with Commissioner Morrow.
I, I agree with Adam.
Same.
Mayor.
Yes.
Restoration. Then why do we have-
For me, it's a little bit of a if but for this money, would this project happen, right? Like, if you're coming with the city, no matter who's writing the request, with things that are on the top of your capital program plan, that's on the city to do, it's regular city money. But if there's something, even if it's on the bottom of the CIP or if it's not on the CIP at all, and it's a good community-based advocacy campaign to come to us, I, I don't care if there's already another parks project that's, that's on the 20%. I think it's okay, because if but for this money, it wouldn't happen.
I, yeah, I would agree. So then we've got, I, I think that we definitely need to have a cap on personnel costs and administrative costs.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before we leave letters of support, I think we need to be clear that the letters from the city, from whatever city department, those are letters of permission.
Permission, yeah, they're not support, they're permission. That's what I said, it's letters of permission, they're not support.
Let's keep them clear.
Thank you for that.
Okay, and next, and we did agree on the match requirement.
We did not have a discussion.
We're still talking about that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we kind of did.
Marie's comment was that she feels that there should be some because people need to have to get in the game. Whether it's volunteer time, you know, the one I applied for, all of our match was, we were doing the physical work to do the project. That's how we matched it.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up because I know that prior to us having this discussion right now, Maria brought up the topic and it seemed like there was general consensus. But I just wanted to say that I, I support that as well. I think it helps winnow the field a little bit and helps us see projects that come from more established organizations. And not necessarily trying to count out newer organizations. I know that's something we talked about at our last meeting about what's your history with projects like these, and I think that there's a way to balance it, but I think there's also a way of us including this as a, a way of trying to make sure that the organization's applications that make it to us are more qualified than others.
Sounds, yes.
On, on, back to the permission letters, I think part of that education piece needs to be communicated to city staff, that it's not even just a permission of it's on our property. And I use parks as that's one of the biggest examples, although the tree, the lighting downtown was an example where Public Works wrote a support and a permission, yet it was a project that they later didn't support and wasn't physically capable of happening because Public Works refused to do it. So if a department is going to put their blessing on it, then they're acknowledging that not only they, that they give permission to it, that it's feasible, feasible under that department to do it.
You're talking about the one that was under Liz?
Yeah.
The over, yeah.
Wait, I mean, because we granted it, it was signed off by Public Works, and they're like, oh, we can't do it. It's like, well, you signed a letter saying you gave permission to it, so to me, that was-
There was some, this like chicken, there was some parts missing.
And that may cost staff time to, you know, really do that, to know that, because some projects are going to be easy, oh, it's in the park and this is fine, but you know, what, how does, it may not be just it's in the park, it's how does it affect the other things in the park?
Park, exactly.
And is it feasible of even building it?
So letters of, from, with regard to city departments, so there'll be letters of permission and feasibility.
Feasibility, feasibility is a good word.
And feasibility is a good word.
Feasibility, thank you, that was a good word, feasibility.
He said it first.
And I, I mean, and I.
Okay, whoever said it second.
Well, is feasibility also, is, is the city also then also, is the city also then thinking about the on-term, the long-term addition of the maintenance to that piece or whatever? I mean, because putting some kind of infrastructure in the park, whether it's a piece of art or something, is a commitment not only that it sits there and that it works, but that we're taking on the responsibility of maintaining this and keeping it, and that's a big.
That's a big one.
That's a big piece.
Okay. On the, on the, on the match, have we finished the match discussion?
I think we, I think we agree that we, we want a match.
Can I just throw something out?
Please.
We've made it really complicated. Up to $5,000, 10% of project cost, five to 10,000, 20%, 10 to 20, 30%. Why don't we land on a percentage and it's a, it's a match, it's a percentage of the grant? If you're asking for $50,000, you have to have 25% whatever in matching funds.
We have that in the application already.
But you have, there's five different levels.
Oh, I see.
And it's a percentage of the total project cost. Why is it not one percentage and a percentage of the grant amount that they're asking for?
So you're saying if it's $500, your match is half, you have to put in 250?
Right. Or if, if you're asking for 10,000, whatever the percent, let's say it's 25%. If, if you're asking for $10,000, you have to put in $2,500. Maybe, maybe that's not enough, maybe it should be 50%.
I would say it has to be, I, I wouldn't want to go, I think 20 is too low, 30 is somewhere between 50, I mean, 50, if you want to make it really simple, it's 50%.
So if you have a, if you're asking, the maximum's $50,000, if you're asking for $50,000, you'd have to show $25,000 matching.
In match.
If you're asking for 10,000, cash or in kind.
Cash and kind.
Yeah, if you're asking for 10,000, you have to show a $5,000 match.
Sounds totally reasonable.
What's the rate for, I think it's up to $28 now.
$33.49.
Is what?
33.49.
33.49, so I mean, yeah, it's, it's creeping up.
Wow.
So the.
But the minimum, federal minimum wage is only 750, right?
So the chart, so the chart, so we're trying to make the chart, excuse me, I have a call. We're trying to make the chart in the application have less layers. So we've got 10, 20, 30, 40, 50.
We said 50.
So you said 50%?
Of the requested grant amount.
Okay, 50% across the board.
Yeah, whether it's.
Yep.
Volunteer time and money.
Of the grant request.
Yes, of the grant.
Not of the total project cost.
50% of the grant request.
So if you're.
Would be your match.
Yes. So if you're asking for $50,000 grant, you have to show $25,000.
Match.
In kind or cash or whatever.
Right, so 50% of the grant.
And was it based on the total project cost before?
Yes.
So this would be a lesser requirement.
Yes, it only going to be one sentence or one box.
Yeah, this would be one. Okay.
Okay, cap on personnel costs.
And administrative.
And administrative, because they're kind of similar.
The previous cash was, cap was 10%.
Is what?
10, up to 10.
And that was administrative personnel?
Correct. Administrative were mailings, printing, insurance, personnel was personnel. We didn't include that as part of administrative costs.
Oh, okay.
But administrative costs such as those things that you see there and a few other things, but 10% would be, would represent administrative costs.
And they have to spell, spell it out.
Yep.
I just want to say insurance has gotten bonkers crazy.
Yes, it has.
And I feel like the 10% might actually mean that there are some people who are going to be underinsured and that makes me feel bad. Like we're sending people out for failure, because I know plenty of events that the entire cost of the event, it's like 30% insurance.
Yeah.
So we either need to take insurance out of administrative or we need to raise it.
I have perhaps a dumb question, as far as the insurance goes, well, you haven't heard it yet. If we fund this project and we fund their insurance piece, let's say something does happen, if we provided the money, do we then, are they responsible for paying the deductible if it goes over the 10%?
I think.
Oh, yes, yes, they, they have to, they have to pay them.
So if we're saying 10% of administrative costs and insurance, for example, something happens, they have to pay out insurance money, is that included in the 10% administrative costs or is that an allowed excessive cost?
You're saying if there's a claim made against, that would be separate, so this is the cost of purchasing the insurance.
Okay, but not maintenance?
Well, I was just going to say in, in grant applications, it's pretty, often and this is called indirect costs, and it's pretty standard for it to be 10%. I, I, I don't think I've ever seen it more than 10%, but for something like insurance, I mean, basically what they're saying, you know, if their insurance is more than 10%, we're saying you can use 10% of the grant money towards your insurance, but if it's more than that, then you have to cover that yourself.
That makes sense.
We're not saying we're going to cover all your insurance, no matter, you know, if it's more.
And this is all, keep in mind, these are examples, mailings, printing, insurance, etc., these are the examples, matter of fact, they may not even ask for insurance coverage from us, but they do have to indemnify us.
I mean, a lot of times indirect.
You're talking about hold harmless.
Yeah, hold harmless.
Yeah, you can just get a certificate for that and it's, yeah.
A lot of times indirect costs are thought of as, you know, if you're funding a project, there's a certain amount of money that just goes into the organization having to do.
The administrative.
Their daily activities to carry out.
The grant.
Yeah, just people answering phones or, you know, whatever it is.
So are we okay with 10% administrative costs? And if it, and if it's indirect, it's still administrative cost? Indirect.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think those terms are kind of interchangeable.
I've seen that myself many times.
But I still want to get to what Counselor Lewis brought up about insurance costs, just for the, the plan itself.
Yeah, I feel like if somebody's doing a river cleanup day, that is a high-risk environment, that's going to be $2,000 insurance claim and the food for the lunch is going to be less than that. So in that case, maybe I don't look at insurance as an administrative cost. So I think as long as we're very open to help people define their budget, I'm okay with the 10% cap.
Would we say that?
Well, we can actually, I mean, we stated already in the, in the application, but people do have the opportunity to decide what they want the grant to fund with regard to administrative costs. It doesn't have to be insurance, they might say printing, they might say mailing.
Right.
They might say marketing, I don't know, one of those kind of things. But it sounds like there's a general consensus about 10. 10% on personnel costs? I think we.
Go ahead, Eric.
10% on personnel costs if that individual was hired specifically for that project, not ongoing staff, are we, are we saying?
Here we go again.
I know.
But it's, again, it's administrative personnel that we don't want to be funding.
Well, th- these are two very different things. I mean, indirect costs and personnel was what we were talking about before, we're like, I mean, isn't this like where you would be funding a position? And we may have grants that are 100% personnel, personnel cost, that we may still want to consider.
Right.
So I, I mean, I don't know if I would want any cap, and, and that would be up to the committee's discretion, you know, we, we could still consider those proposals, but.
You're talking, you're not, you're saying no cap on personnel costs?
Yes.
Well, that's the issue, because here again, we'll be, I mean, staff then will be devoting itself to looking at payroll and looking at, and plus, these mom and pop organizations don't have a payroll organization, so they have to come up with some way of proving that they, that they have spent money on personnel. And that's a nightmare.
But I think what we talked about before is although we want to give preference to physical projects, we don't want to exclude, you know, projects that are asking for FTE from conservation.
So if, if, so the example you gave earlier of, let's say like recycling education, right? A substantial part of that project would be paying for somebody to go around and provide recycling education, probably pretty likely that they would spend more than 10% of a grant on that.
I mean, it could be the whole grant.
Yeah.
But if that's their mission, their organization is to provide that and they're paying for that person to go around and do that, to me, that seems like something they'd already, I just, I don't want to fund a project where 100% is going towards somebody doing something. I, I, I'm not sure where the, where the line is.
Well, and I don't know how we put a percent on this, it's kind of like we're either funding positions or we aren't.
Well, there are situations where an organization will hire somebody under contract to do a specific thing, and the enhancement money would go toward paying that contract. That's easy because you have a contract.
Right. But if it's not a contract.
But when it's not a contract, that's a, that's a horse of a different color. So then you get into personnel costs, I would, I would need to see information from their payroll service, if they don't, most people don't have a payroll service, so they're going to have to come up with something to prove that they paid towards staff costs.
Christine?
I guess I'm just, like, there are only two things we're buying, we're buying people's money, or we're using money to buy people's time, or we're using money to buy a product. So we're going to paint a mural, we're buying cans of paint, we're buying the artist's time.
Right.
We better be paying the artist more than cans of paint, so like 10% feels off.
Have you seen the cost of paint?
I have seen the cost of paint.
I went to go buy some, I was like sticker shopping.
So maybe it is 50/50, but it's definitely not 10%. And similarly, you know, like, let's look at a sidewalk improvement, because that seems to be a hot button issue for those of you who are city commissioners. You're buying very expensive aggregate, you're buying a mixing truck and you're buying people to pour the cement, right? Like, I, I just don't feel like you can ever get, like, I understand what we're trying to avoid, but a cap is exactly the wrong direction, because you're always going to be buying stuff and time.
Yeah, I would be supportive of the 50/50, especially again, going back to the question that we added about how is this going to impact Oregon city residents in the long term? That's where we have the opportunity to talk about the physical tangible asset and score that according to our own personal opinions.
Well, that's the other thing, is that rather than just saying 40%, whatever it is, what is it that they're going to, you know, that's the questions I've asked, okay, you've shown that you have this much time for personnel, what is this person doing? You know, that should be in the, you know, they, there's enough room in that space to write down specifically, you know, this, this cost is going to, this person will be doing X. This is what they're, you know.
And they can identify it in the project.
Right, and they, we haven't gotten that very often.
I, I do like the idea of a limited term contract, though at least like something that's quantifiable.
That, that is. If it's a regular staff person, it's, he's, you're getting into, yeah.
Getting into standard operating costs.
Whatever the personnel version of HIPAA is, is kind of, you're getting into that.
But, so maybe then we don't put a cap, but say you need to prove that you have a contract, here's all the stipulations, here's the scope.
Right to this project, yeah.
You know?
Right, and stuff.
To, to, you know, X amount of time, you know, if it's, it's a specialist that you're bringing in to help out with the design, the implementation, they don't need to be the full duration, they can be six months, 90 days. And then just somehow not making allowance for extensions or, I don't know, that part I don't know.
But it is definitive.
Yeah.
So rather than a cap, we, we've got a, an eligibility section where it says there, there's a list of things that the project funds may not be used for. So do we want to add a statement in it if it says the project funds may not be used for administrative personnel of the organization?
Right.
And then if they're asking for, for money for people, they have to be able to, in the, as you said, in the application justify, here's what the people are going to do, we are spending money on people, but they're going to paint or.
What?
Train or whatever.
All right.
I don't know if everybody has that pulled up, do you want to just review that quickly? What else we have in there to?
Oh, must not discriminate based on race, ethnicity, so forth, must not promote or inhibit religion, may not fund property improvement projects that could not directly support the goals of the community enhancement program, and there's a couple of others.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Number of times a single applicant reapply and under what conditions?
I think a good project's a good project, I wouldn't be interested in a cap.
And if they're bad, they're not going to get there anyway.
Exactly.
Not bad, not, not, not credible. Okay, next page.
Next one, Ben. Two, okay, so this is where staff has to be careful, then we exercise care not to step over a boundary, but you, you had, the comment was made that you really want us to review and scan and almost be tough on the review so that you're not sitting here doing what we should have done in the first place. Is that what I'm hearing?
My takeaway when we talked about it was staff are ensuring all the boxes are checked, and then if they've met all the requirements of the application, then it comes to the committee. I, I don't think it's the responsibility of staff to screen the merit of an application.
Not the merits, but it looks, it smells like a duck, walks like a duck, I don't want to see it.
But that's, but that's subjective.
No, I mean, say, if they don't meet all the checkboxes, then we, if it's incomplete, I don't want to see it.
Fully agree, if it's incomplete, don't forward it on to the committee, but if it's complete application.
Yeah.
Yep.
The two examples that come to mind for me are the one that was going on in the Kenema Cemetery that we later realized was outside the city limits of Oregon City, and the other one that comes to mind is the Be Leave one from this cycle. And they both had to do with things that, I mean, I don't know what we would expect of staff to filter through because each application is different, and I don't want to send staff through 100 different rabbit holes to make sure that this one thing having to do with private property is making sure that they have all of the right 501(c)(3) or 501(c) whatever documents in place. Like that was a problem that we had with this last one. So I don't know how we anticipate for staff what it is that they're going to have to go through because of the diversity of projects that are being submitted to us, but at the same time, I don't want us to be in the situation like we were this year where we were realizing that we may possibly be giving money to an organization to improve their private property without any public benefit and without any assurances that it would be a, a public benefit.
So there was, there was no, there wasn't any tangible connection between that and what the public was going to get, and then if they say they're a 501(c), there's an easy way to check it without going through a bunch of hoops, there's, there's a list, you know who the IRS is doing. But I think, I think regardless of the way that statement was written, we are not going to fund projects on private property, and we have been consistent with that.
Without a public benefit.
Well.
We funded murals on private buildings, but we recognize that they have a public benefit. But in the case of the Be Leave, there weren't the, the documents in place to assure that the dollars that we were investing in private property were going to be for the public's benefit.
Because he was going to be transferred in the future.
Yes, and it had nothing to, it had nothing to do with the private property owner's affiliation with the Proud Voice. It, it had everything to do with the fact that we need to make sure that the dollars that we're investing are going to be used for public purposes.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Um, so we got that one. Does committee want to have some more of the, yeah? Basically, I think you got the answer to, to the second one.
We did.
Next one.
Well, can I make one last? I, I think where this could get a little more confusing though is if staff is having to make a judgment call on, like, let's say an application is complete, but whether or not the project would qualify. You know, if somebody's asking for something inadmissible, would staff, even though the application was complete, would staff eliminate that?
What do you mean by inadmissible?
I don't know.
Just throw stuff?
If somebody was asking for something really ridiculous, like they wanted to paint their car or something, you know, just something that was like clearly...
pave their driveway. That's what I think.
But would they have to then be like reading the application to determine whether or not that qualified? I mean, I think that's kind of putting the staff in a, in a judgment call position.
I think it's more like, okay, this is, not, you know, before I was talking about it being almost a recommendation, but they all come to us, but maybe staff says, you know, these are things that we caught that are, you know, you might be aware of that maybe this is like a recommendation or a staff.
That could be a long night.
Well, I know.
I don't want to be that, that long night.
So how exactly does the money disbursement work after they've been granted the funds? Do they have, like, let's say, is it then that they have to submit their proof of paperwork, like the 501(c) status? Because then it would limit the amount of people that staff has to vet.
Well, some, some, many of the guidelines, many requirements, they have to submit with the application itself, like the 501(c) status letter, they have to submit that.
They should have any IN number.
We should, yeah, they have those numbers. But, um, when it comes to, um, after the contract has been awarded, there's a contract. And so they would have to certify in the contract that, uh, they don't owe, they don't owe anybody taxes, they're in good standing, uh, that, that they will comply with, with, with what they would say, what they said in the grant agreement. So the, the, the application is an integral part of the contract. And so we attach it.
Okay. And they're signing their life away. And maybe their firstborn child, I don't know, whatever, you know, whatever the, that's personnel cost. Yeah.
But it seemed like staff should be looking for completeness, the, the completeness of the application, but they're not actually reading the application.
Well, they are reading it while they're looking for completeness. So if somebody comes in and they want to pave a driveway, I think staff should be able to say, uh, no, that doesn't qualify as a project. That would be, I disagree.
I don't agree.
You don't agree? You think...
That should come to the committee. It's up to us to determine.
If it's a complete application.
If it's a complete application and it meets the eligibility rules, most of which I, I read, and there's a couple more, it comes to us and we don't score it high.
We don't even have to listen to a presentation from them. We can just say from the very beginning, this does not meet our standards, sorry. Yeah, I don't want to put James or anybody else in a position where people are alleging unfair treatment based on the application and kind of his opinions. Really should be, if you've submitted a complete application, even if it's to pave your own driveway, say, we don't have to fund it. We don't have to, yeah. And that's why we also include the strongly recommended training pre-application conference.
So then the other thing that came up, um, do we want to continue to have people do a presentation?
No. If you, if you have questions as a reviewer...
We'll pull you up.
We could get them submitted a week ahead of time and get response back. You can use the internet. There are plenty of ways to get our answers, get our answers without that.
I, I question whether they need to be there at all. I think that just makes the whole process so much more dramatic.
I agree.
I also think that...
I fully agree.
You don't have the opportunity to make a presentation, maybe that would encourage you to be a more thoughtful about your submission.
And I, I agree as well, so, you know, public sector, if we go, if you go out for bid for something, you, you get the bids in, you post it on a website, these is, this is the awardee, and then maybe you give them a week, two weeks to reach out, ask questions about, you know, why they were refused, but then be done with it.
And, and honestly, I feel like it would be a lot easier for us to have a frank conversation about these applications if the applicants weren't all sitting right there staring at us.
You're leaving the evil eye.
Well, they... I mean, they're welcome to attend.
It still has to be a public meeting, so they could still be sitting there staring at us.
Okay, sounds like we have a consensus. No more presentations.
Yeah, and I thought I was telling that, um, in the comparison, which I appreciate you putting that together, staff putting that together, that, that seemed to be the norm for the other ones, was not including that presentation. One other thing, um, that I would like to see at least considered, that I also saw from that staff comparison, um, is the youth involvement component. I think it would be really nice to have a liaison from our Youth Advisory Commission sitting on this committee, uh, because looking at some of the other ones, they were entirely youth-led, so I think that would be a great opportunity. You beat me to that, I was literally gonna make that same recommendation.
I, I agree. Good idea.
What I would hope happens is that people would have a more thorough application. Whether or not we're gonna be able to get our questions asked 10 days ahead of time, I mean, I read mine like five days before our meeting. And I had to have like peace and quiet and just went through them.
Well, if they're still in the audience and we have a question, I mean, we would call, we have the right to call them up and ask a question.
Sure.
I mean, for me, I think it changes, the prep work is really on the reading and not the reading synthesized while you're listening, right? So I'll, I'll prepare a little bit differently, but I think if we're really going off of a thorough application, there's no need for presentation, just further questions answered.
In my time, both in front of the counter and behind the counter, I could only think of three applicants that I personally thought made a good presentation. It was they said what the project was, what they were gonna do, that was it. It didn't, the other ones over the years have just been all over the place.
I'm in agreement as well. If we have questions on the applications, that mean they didn't fill everything out as they should have...
Well, then they're not getting to us. If they have, they have an incomplete application, they already would come into us. If they didn't fill it out, we're not dealing with it. That's where the staff is gonna screen that out.
Well, there still could be questions, though.
Yeah, but I know, I'm saying there still could be questions, but I'm, if it's incomplete, it's not gonna even get to us, so, okay, so we've got that.
I'm just thinking we, we might have to talk to our city attorney about how we can ask those questions and, and who to, so we don't, we want to create a serial meeting?
Well...
So I think we'd have to send them to James.
I think the idea is if they could be there as public members and if we have questions...
Well, I thought we were talking about getting our questions answered ahead of time.
Well, I'm saying I don't know how practical that is, given everybody's schedule.
I was speaking at, at the meeting, but...
He's saying that if there's something that comes up, we could call that person up and ask them a question, but they aren't gonna do a presentation.
Makes sense.
So what about the instance where a, a group isn't able to attend and they, we don't have the opportunity to ask some questions?
We had somebody zoom in last time.
Or, I mean, still, we can judge the application on the merit of the application and theoretically fund it, whether they're there or not.
If they want the money, they're, and they, they need to make somebody available to be there. That's, you know, that's part of the grant then.
We just need to make that clear in the instructions.
Well, if there's no presentation, is there a requirement that someone still be there?
They can attend as members of...
But do they have to?
They don't have to.
Okay.
But you, they always run the risk...
Ann wants to chime in here.
If they, somebody doesn't show up and there's, and you have a question...
Yeah, that might make their, not as strong a proposal.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I just wanted to circle back. I heard, um, Commissioner Marl and Commissioner Wilson, and I also think Commissioner Mitchell, say they wanted to have a liaison with our Youth Advisory Commission. Do we want to continue that conversation or...
I want to think about it. I'm not against it, I just want to think about it.
Okay.
Well, if there's a majority, then we can...
Those people are pretty darn busy.
Or just a youth member, I mean, one of Metro's goals with this is benefiting youth.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a notable voice that's missing on the committee here on the, the committee. So a member of the youth, I think, whether it's from the Youth Advisory Commission or not. I think in order to make it easier administratively without having to go out to the public, it might be easier to restrict it to the Youth Advisory Commission, and because they're already more familiar with city, uh, administration and activities, is why I would support that. But I do, yeah, I understand. I think, I, I agree, I think that would be easier.
We'll just, we'll have, um, let's have it put on the agenda and see if there's interest, because I think, you know, somebody, there's probably somebody that would be interested.
And we can decide tonight with a majority and bring that to them, yeah.
Yeah, so, we'll, and then we'll...
Yeah, we need to decide one way or the other tonight, because we're not gonna meet again until...
So I will make a motion that we include a Youth Advisory Commission liaison for the committee membership.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? And I'm only abstaining because I still need to think about it.
I figured you would.
Not because I'm against it. I'll talk to our staff. All right, is there anything else? Because I was gonna call, say, well, it's almost 8:25, it might be time for a bathroom break.
Well, yeah, well, I think we've, we've covered it all.
Yes, I believe you.
Big picture issues.
I have a topic I want to add.
Other than the, because this helps us now, this helps staff put together a new type of application, a new type of questionnaire, and we have a new process. So this helps a lot.
Do you want a break?
If we're, if we're almost done, I think.
Do we need a quick break?
I think it depends on how much longer.
Yeah.
I have a very small proposal.
Let's take a very quick five-minute break. That way nobody's uncomfortable.
I just feel like-
Are we on?
No.
Oh, sorry. Well, yeah, he was, we were off.
Oh, well, the sign was on the whole time. I just feel like the intent of this grant is to do neighborhood-scale investment. Over the years, $50,000 has meant different things and is obviously less buying power than it was 10 years ago when you could apply for $50,000. I guess I would just suggest that we might consider lowering the max in order to have folks really budget to what they need for a neighborhood-scale investment and not basically come to us as kind of a, like, you're the best grant program in Clackamas County, which is kind of what I was hearing. So, my recommendation would be $35,000 or $40,000. You can still buy a lot, it's still a significant amount of money, it's worth the effort.
You're saying, lower the cap? Okay, that's what I thought I heard you say.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, um, in, in my mind, if we're trying to get to the scale of a neighborhood or part of a community, that's still plenty to serve it, and you're not getting folks who are kind of like, I'm going to serve all of Clackamas County, and $50,000 is what I want, which is what I heard.
Any thoughts?
Out, out of curiosity, other committees, do they have caps around that same? Not that we have to follow suit, I'm just curious.
I looked at last year's grants for East County, and their max looked like it was $20,000. I didn't look at all of them.
It's a good benchmark. I hope you didn't hurt your leg when you did that.
No, it's just the chair.
Because there's a thing there that, yeah, you could kneecap yourself.
Is, is, I'm sorry, is, is there currently a cap?
Fifty.
Fifty.
Fifty thousand.
Yeah, I'm trying to, because I wonder how long-
And we had, we had a couple of people go to, go to that max.
Added it, I mean, when did we, because it wasn't always a cap, so it's probably extended it for some reason, or expanded it for some reason.
As a matter of fact, what we're finding is that, for, for a lot of organizations, $50,000 is plenty.
Is what?
Is plenty. So, on the average, the average grant we're providing is, is between $25,000 to $35,000.
Okay.
Especially if we are revisiting the caps on administrative costs, on matches, then, like you said, budgeting and then budgeting specifically for the work in that project versus just applying for as much as they can.
Thoughts? Do you like a, do you like a cap?
Yeah, I would agree with that. The only thing that I would add is that if we have the same amount of organizations applying, but for this lower amount, that means more money left over. So, unless we get more people involved and more organizations applying, we're always going to end up where we feel like we have to fund everyone, even if they aren't worthy projects, just by dint of the fact that we have that excess money.
I don't agree with that.
No, I'm, that's what, I agree. I, I just want to make sure that we do plenty of outreach, so that the excess money that we have, as a result of lowering the cap, that we don't feel like we're just choosing between a bunch of mediocre projects.
I totally agree. I, you know, I, I didn't, I really didn't want to do the second round, because I didn't feel we had to spend all the money. I mean, if we carry it over, we don't have to spend every single dime.
Yeah, if it carries over year over year, then-
We haven't been carrying over hardly, I mean, we made $2,000, maybe $2,000. I mean, it's been very miniscule what we've carried over, but I don't want to fund mediocre projects just because we have the money. Because I don't think that does the community any good whatsoever. So, do we have a, do we want to lower the amount that people can apply for? She, James was saying $25,000 to $30,000 is our average.
Thirty-five.
Excuse me, thirty-five?
Thirty-five. So, maybe lower it to forty?
Pardon?
Lower it from fifty to forty?
Well, that's an option. Forty?
Yeah, I have no issue with that.
Forty? Forty, forty, forty.
All right.
Okay.
Forty it is.
Forty it is. And? You had something, Michael?
Yeah. Ann, can you bring up the scoring chart?
Wow, that took a long time for that circle to populate in there.
I think I need to share. I'm going to share it through Zoom, so that it gets captured and streamed.
Okay. So, while she's bringing it up, I, I've got two concerns with the scoring. The first is the zero to five.
Yeah.
Because I'm trying to, you know, when I'm trying to score these things, I'm kind of trying to put them on a curve. And if I've got 14 applicants that I'm looking at, and I can only go from zero to five, I can't differentiate the scores. So, I would suggest something higher than that. And I'll, I'll get to a suggestion in a minute. The other thing is, is there any way you can, can you scroll down? Okay, the first two, stop, yeah, go, go up just a little, so we can see the first two questions.
About one and two?
Yeah. The first two, so-
Slide it over to, because you just went into the-
Okay, there. Those first two, based on the description of the project, does it respond to the goals? And does it positively impact the city? That's really, to me, that, those are the important two.
Well, we're taking out the word "community," remember?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
What happened to the, when you did something, you adjusted it, so, because they were numbers a minute ago. I don't know what happened there.
And, so then if you scroll down, so those two, to me, are more important. And then if you scroll down-
Yeah, to number three.
The next three, can they manage the project? Do the measurements affect the gaze of the project? Do they have the resources? Those are kind of, kind of secondary to me. So, what I'm suggesting is those first two, we make worth 20 points. The next three, plus adding one, does the project have an impact on Oregon City that lasts beyond the grant period, or however that's worded, to get to those longer-term ones? Add that as another one, worth 10 points. And that's where the idea of being able to score a project with a physical component, when you did your scoring, you could, you could score it that way. So, it ends up with a total of 80 points, 20 points each for the first two questions that get to kind of the heart of what it's going to do, and then 10 points each for the next four that are kind of more administrative a little bit. So, the total would be 80 points. So, that way, when you do your scoring, you actually have a chance to, you know, you grade on, I don't know how you grade art projects, so I won't put that wrong.
It's actually one through four now. Why, why go to twenty, when you can go one?
But it took a long way to get there.
Why not one to 10?
Because I want to be able to put those, I wanted to have more emphasis on those first two questions. So, that way, if, if it's 80 points total, and there's 20 on each of those first two, that's half, half the scoring is, how does it really meet the goals? And then the other half of the scoring is more of the nuts and bolts. Can they manage it?
Number three is really critical to me, because if they have, it doesn't have to be an enhancement project, but if they have no experience on managing any other kind of a project, I, I don't feel comfortable with that. I, I don't care how wonderful it is. If they don't have experience, because that sets us up for failure. They don't have any experience in doing a project, period. How are they planning on implementing it? So, I mean, I, I weigh that pretty heavy. I'm not saying that it's the make or break, but it's, it's one of those where it's up there. It's important to me, that I see that they have some, some ability.
What if it's like a stream cleanup, or a park cleanup, or something like that, that doesn't necessarily require project management experience in the past?
Yes, you do have to have project management to do that. That's why SOL has been so successful. That is project-managed. Because if you don't have any, you've got just people in there tromping around and stepping the stream, you don't want them to be doing that. They may cause more destruction on something that they're trying to save. So, you do want to have some experience, and yes, I know how to deal with riparian areas. I'm not having people come creeping off the side of a creek bed and mess up the bank. It's, it's pretty technical.
With question number five, I always felt like I didn't really have enough information to answer that, you know, does the proposed budget, sufficient resources? Like, I don't know what a stream restoration costs, you know? And, and so, it's like, a lot of times, I kind of felt like, how, how do I answer that? So, I don't, I wasn't a big fan of-
Which one?
Uh, number five.
The budget?
Based on the proposed budget, does the applicant have sufficient resources to successfully implement the project within the required timeframe? It's like, I, I don't know.
Yes, I, yes, I'm, I have a stream riparian specialist knows about this. Yes, we've done these projects before, blah, 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 Abernathy Creek, blah, 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 blah.
But I feel like a lot of that would be answered in number three. You know, do they have the ability to successfully manage the project? I don't know. I'm seeing some nods from some other people, that maybe five was, I, I just felt like I couldn't very answer that with a lot of certainty most of the time.
What if you combined those two into one for 20, to match the top ones?
Just make three and five, one question?
Then we only have one question, that's five points.
That, that, that's a, that's an improvement, I think.
Oh, oh, he was saying they would be 10 points, the other ones.
That's what he was saying.
Oh.
The first two.
But yeah, you're right.
So, a perfect score would be 80, in your recommendation. Yeah, but I, I'm throwing that out there, just for, just for discussion. The important thing to me is that we raise the value on all of them, so we can actually put some spread to it. And then, are there some questions that are more important than others, that should be weighted more than others? I'm not necessarily, you know, locked into what I suggested.
And I agree that there are. Some of those questions are clearly more important.
May I? Mayor? Thank you.
I'm writing as fast as I can.
So, I think, to add on to question three, they experienced managing similar projects. I understand the intent of that, but again, going back to our, our experience from this last round, I don't want to necessarily bar out other emerging organizations who may have a lot of good work that they want to do. Obviously, it is a bonus if they're, they have a proven track record, but this also acts as a way to exclude newer ideas, because when we're removing the limit on how many times you can reapply, I, I feel like if we were to overweight that number three question, that puts us into a cycle where we're just doing the same things every single year, because they all have a track record, and we all know they can do it, so why not just do it again?
Well, it's not saying that you don't have any experience, it's saying, do you have experience managing similar projects? If they've done something else that's not this project, that, to me, says, yes, we understand the concept of doing a project.
Yes, and at the same time, what we're trying to, as Councilor Lewis talked about when she advocated for bringing down the cap, we're trying to get at those local neighborhood-scale investments. And I don't know how many community groups, using neighborhood associations as an example, I think now they're getting more experience, because a lot of them are applying for these. But for those who haven't gone through this project, or through this process, I'm not sure how many of them have experience with grants either, and I don't think that should be to their detriment necessarily.
Well, to give an example, there's a lot of talent in these neighborhood associations. It might not be a grant like this, but if they were, let's say that in their past life, they were a retired project manager. I would put that down. You know, one of our project team has experience in managing projects, they did X, it might not exactly be an enhancement project, but that's still somebody thinking about it. When we did our sign cap project, the person that we had, that was managing the project, had project-managed experience, not putting up sign caps, but they had project-managed experience doing projects in their job. And that was, we put that in as our, our experience. It was very, it was really helpful.
Yeah, so, all I was saying, not to disagree with anything that you just said, was just not to overweight it.
No, I'm not saying we overweighted, I'm just saying-
So, as not to exclude other organi- organizations, emerging organizations. And could you go to the first question? So, I'm trying to figure out where-
I would put that question last, not first.
I'm trying to figure out where we include the part where it's, not how many Oregon City residents, but how does, how do Oregon City residents benefit?
That's on the, that's a second one, I think.
That's, that's one of the questions further down.
Okay.
It's-
And then it's removing the, what is the estimate?
What is the estimate? That's where it would go. It would change from, how will Oregon City residents benefit from this project?
Yeah, within the city limits.
Yes, and say, yeah, you could even say that.
Okay, thank you.
Now, you just have to craft all this, so we can look at it again.
Well, I, I don't know that we had consensus on, did we have consensus on what I suggested? Like, adding the ques- adding one question?
I think we had consensus on the adding the question, we didn't have consensus on the, on the scoring.
Okay, well, we've got to have that, because we're not meeting again.
I didn't say we were done. I just said, okey-dokey, we're done with that question, fixing that question.
I'll agree with you on double weighting the first two questions.
Pardon?
I agree with you on double weighting the first two questions. Everybody like that?
Yeah. And what was the additional recommended question?
Long-term.
Oh, yes, yes.
Longer term than just the grant period.
Yes, okay.
Is that another question, or is that an add, adding onto a question?
That's an additional question.
So, there'd be six?
Yes.
Six.
And that would be a spot where you could, a scorer could more heavily weight project with a physical component.
And that would be worth ten?
Yes.
Okay.
That was my suggestion.
And keeping the last question that we talked about, about the financial ability, or the-
Well, we maybe suggested combining three and five.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't, that-
Yeah, that was-
That's open for discussion.
Yeah, sure.
I didn't-
I don't carry the weight, but it, oh.
So, so still, we're talking about 80 points at the end? Or 70, if it gets, if, if, if we use Eric's suggestion and combine those two. Okay. We have to decide something here.
Yes.
Because we're also adding the points.
Yes. I'd be in favor of keeping a question related to the budget. I look at it a little bit more as, is this a prudent budget, to actually complete the project?
Right.
Not, is there enough resource, but have they been thoughtful?
So, maybe reword it a little bit?
Yeah. I mean, I would say, is this a good budget, but you got to say something a little bit more.
Is this a good budget? Yes. Well, they, of course, are going to say, yes, it's a great budget. That's not what we're trying, trying to get at.
How would you word it?
So, we have to think about some possible wording.
I mean, the things that I think make up a good budget are, it's, it's reasonable, so their matches are already secured, or like, almost 100% secured. You can't have somebody with a match for one other grant that's a long shot that they're going to get.
Right, and we've had that.
Yep. So, that's, that goes into that budget question. Similarly, I think it's, everything kind of costs what it costs out there in the world, with some contingency built in, so that they're not going to be cash-strapped or unable to purchase the things that they budgeted for, because their numbers weren't anywhere near what the real market is.
Yeah, I noticed that on some of them, there was no contingency built into it whatsoever, which I thought, hmm, that's a problem.
And then I just think that a budget that actually shows they put some thought into it, because they do have, you know, T-shirts, postcards, all separated out, and not just marketing with a nice round number.
That's what we've been getting.
Right.
I always, I told people with asthma, I said, more is, more is better. Explain what you're saying, because I can't read into it.
So, normally, we would have, if it were not for this session here, normally, we would have us, an administrative session in February. And then after February, then we'd have our, the meeting of decision-making. So, I guess what I'm recommending is that we come back to you with these changes in February.
Yeah.
Which would be our administrative meeting.
Yep.
I like it.
Yeah, I agree. We need to have, we need to see what we said works in reality.
So, we're keeping three and five separate, then?
I think so.
I would, because I think the budget piece is different from three.
Yeah. Okay, so we have six questions in total?
Yeah.
And each one of those questions, your first two are 20 points each, and the remainder, the remaining is, would be 10. Okay. Yep. That way, you can, you have enough room to differentiate.
Yeah.
Good from bad.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, this has been most helpful, thank you.
Is there anything else for the good of the order?
Thank you to, thank you to James and Ann.
Yes.
And for all of you for attending. I think we made some big, big improvements.
This is exactly what I was, what I was hoping for, is that we'd have, we'd have a frank discussion about how we get this back on track and make it really work for what we thought it was going to work. So, Scott's eyes are saying adjourned, so we are so, so moved.